Good evening, everyone. Would you please find a seat if you are standing? I'd like to call the November 4th Board of Trustees Meeting to order. And will everyone please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
Present. And today we will begin with a newly appointed officer. Oh, no, we can't take him out now. We need Zachary. I just want to inform the residents that, you know, we've had a busy year in the police department. We've hired three new officers. We've promoted two. We've had a retirement. And so things are moving along in the Tukahoe Police Department, and I'm really pleased with the progress that we've made there. Today, we are appointing Jessica Gonzalez as police officer to the Tukahoe Police Department. We interviewed Jessica. I'm sorry, I'm out of breath because I'm a little bit out of shape. I tried to run to my office, and I didn't have the key, and ran back to make it here in time, and now I can't even breathe. That's not good. It's not good, Renee. So I just want to say that we had an interview with her, and I think that the board unanimously was really impressed with her, not just with her background and her experience in the other organization where she worked, but just her enthusiasm, her insight, her love for community policing. So we are really grateful and excited to welcome a new police officer into the police department. And so I'm going to ask for a motion to swear in Officer Jessica Gonzalez.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? And I'm going to ask her to come forward with her husband, who will hold the Bible, so we can swear her in. Stand here. Do stand there. You'll hold the Bible for her. Hold the Bible here. Raise your right hand, put your left hand on the Bible. And just repeat after me. Yes, your left hand. There you go. Aye, Jessica Gonzalez.
Aye, Jessica Gonzalez. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer in Tukahoe. To the best of my abilities.
Welcome and felicidades.
Aw. Aw, mama. Mama.
Chief? Chief, it's past Zach's bedtime, so let's move this along. Chief, would you please say a few words?
Good evening. I'd like to congratulate Jessica for a well-deserved appointment. We were so impressed with her resume, her communication skills, and the rave reviews from her previous department. She fits the mold of what we're looking for here in the village. We welcome her to the team, and I wish her a successful career. So congratulations, Jessica, and congratulations, family.
If anyone on the board would like to offer some words? Trustee Ling?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Officer Gonzalez, and we look forward to working with you. Congratulations to your family as well. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. We're happy to have you.
Congratulations. It is very exciting to have you join us. And I just want to reiterate what the mayor said. We were also very impressed with you when you came for your interview, and we look forward to working with you.
And I have to say, when you interviewed, such warmth and light. I know that sounds kind of hokey and silly, but I so look forward to seeing you kind of out on our streets and our communities and bringing your kind of warmth and joy to Tukahoe. Thank you.
Officer Gonzalez, would you like to say a few words? You can go to the mic.
Hello? Well, first and foremost, I want to say thank you, everybody, for being here today. And I do want to give you guys, once again, I wish I could give you guys all a hug and say thank you much for this opportunity to be working for the Village of Tukahoe Police Department and to be able to serve its great community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, one more thing, I'm sorry. And to thank you for all my family and friends out here. Thank you.
Congratulations. So Officer Gonzalez, I know Zachary is tired. So if you would like to take a moment now to have your family go and celebrate with you, you have an opportunity to do so now. Have a good night.
Aye, have a good night.
Good stuff happening tonight. We have a very loving community. If you all recall, last year, we started the, a tradition that I hope will continue for decades to come in Tukahoe in presenting a resident with a marble award. I want to read to you the criteria for receiving the marble award. And tonight, we will present this year's winner of the award. The Tukahoe Marble Award is granted to a maximum of one Tukahoe resident per calendar year who meets one or more of the following criteria and deserves recognition for accomplishments and positive impact on village residents and/or government. One, this person has made a lasting and meaningful contribution to the Village of Tukahoe that will withstand the test of time. Two, a profound strength of character, conviction, or dedication to Tukahoe and neighboring communities. Three, an exceptional ability to include and assist all members of the Tukahoe community to improve the quality of life of their neighbors. Four, this person has made efforts to strengthen Tukahoe by either facilitating events that highlight the rich diversity within the village or whose personal accomplishments have helped to bring all Tukahoe residents together to celebrate the accomplishments of residents from every part of our community. And five, this person has demonstrated a remarkable ability to both preserve local history and educate the local community on Tukahoe's rich historic and cultural heritage. This commitment to history has withstood the test of time and impacted multiple generations. So I'd like to read the award, and then I will ask this person, when I announce who they are, to come forward. And Trustee Gachion will come forward and help me with presenting it. In recognition of your lifelong dedication to the Village of Tukahoe, the Tukahoe Library, and other civic organizations, you have profoundly impacted generations of Tukahoe residents with your unwavering commitment to fostering a love for reading, learning, and music. Your legacy of engagement and inclusivity continues to reflect the heart and soul of Tukahoe. And this year's Tukahoe Marble Award is presented to Elaine Provenzano. Elaine, I have worked alongside you for just a small period of time compared to the impact that you've had on the village, and I can't think of a more deserving person for this award. Last year, Chief Costanzo received the award. This year, the board voted to have you receive the award.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. My mom is watching. I don't think she expects. I said, "Watch." I told the library is going to open. We're going to announce it. This is so meaningful to me. When you grew up in Tukahoe, if I deserve this award, it's because I grew up in Tukahoe. I grew up with the family that I grew up with. And my grandfather mined this marble in the early 20th century. He came here from Italy. He's an immigrant. And he worked in the marble quarry. And all the values that we have are from our families and from our friends and from this community. And that's why it's so vital and important for us to preserve our history. I see Clara is back there. And all of you, all of you have played such a role in preserving our history so that future generations can enjoy. And I know that you all know that Tukahoe is unique, even those of you who haven't been here as long. But thank you so much. I will treasure this the rest of my life. I'm so honored. Thank you again.
Feel like we need tissue tonight.
Elaine.
It's the box. Okay. So we have some more good news. I'm going to ask the Axelbaum family to come forward with the Tukahoe Kids Table presentation. And then, following the Axelbaum family, we will have Dr. Renee Howell come forward to talk, give us an update on the comprehensive plan as well as presenting the Tukahoe Road Race check presentation.
Hello. My name-
Wait, what?
Very good, very good.
Hello. My name is Hudson Axelbaum, and I am nine and a half years old.
Hi. My name is Denver Axelbaum, and I am five and a half years old. And we work from Tukahoe Kids Table.
Tukahoe Kids Table was started in 2022 after I discussed an idea with Mayor Andino and then pitched it to the trustees. The goal of Tukahoe Kids Table is to raise money for village charities and organizations. We sell handmade items at the farmer's market and other pop-ups like DPW Day and the village tag sale. Items are handmade by people in the village and donated to the table. And we donate every single penny to the chosen organizations. If anyone watching right now makes things, we would love if you donated items to the table. And just so you know, the Tukahoe Kids Table isn't just for kids. It was made by kids. Denver and I are always there, and sometimes other kids join us to help out. You can get more information by following Tukahoe Kids Table, all one word, on Facebook or Instagram. Ready for the total that we have raised over the past three years? Drumroll, please. Eight thousand, six hundred, sixty-four dollars. That's over $2,800 raised this year alone. The two organizations we raised money for this year were the first-ever Tukahoe Pride Celebration, which was amazing, and to the library. And we just saw a preview of the renovation, which was also amazing. Thank you to Mayor Andino and the trustees for all of your support, as well as anyone who donated items or helped us sell at the table, like the Harwitzes and Ringlers. We also want to thank all of the people who bought items and donated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Denver. Thank you, Hudson. So I'd like for us to take a page out of Denver and Hudson's book about what it means to serve your community. So we're going to have Dr. Renee Howell come forward now.
Good evening, Mayor.
That's a hard act to follow.
I know, I know. But the future is bright.
Yes.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So the first thing I'd like to talk about is the comprehensive plan. So I don't know if anybody's been going to the website of the village, but if you go there, on the front page, at the top, almost center of the webpage, you'll see comprehensive plan. If you go there, you'll start to see that Fisher Associates, the company that is leading us through the comprehensive plan, has started to populate it with information that we'll need as we go through this journey. So I encourage everyone to go there. We are also launching a survey. So that is the first step of gathering information from the community. So I don't know if we can see this or if we can get a close-up of that, but we'll be placing flyers all around the community. We'll be, the comprehensive plan, we'll be handing them out at different locations. We're going to go to the seniors. We're going to go to a couple of different groups, put up posters, and encourage as many people as possible in the village to fill out the survey. Then, on December 4th, we are going to have our first public forum, and that'll be held at the community center, 6:30? Seven? Okay, seven. I think we just settled on seven. Where we're going to take the community through the survey results and start the process of community input. So I encourage everyone in the village to log on to the survey. You can get there through the website as well, right? Or do we? Okay, we'll put that code on the website. So the process has begun. We're very excited about this and look forward to having a lot of participation from the community. Second, we have finally done all the accounting, and thanks to Ryan Rueda for that, for the Tukahoe Challenge Road Race. And if I could ask the members who are here from the committee, all the volunteers who helped make it happen, to come up, as well as anybody who's here from the library board? Hey. Good to see you. There. We're going to walk around. So this was the 48th running of this race. So this is another, you know, piece of Tukahoe history that's been going on for a very long time. And we are happy to announce that we were able to raise $25,000 for the library.
Can the volunteers like Jeff and Claire, can you come up too? Come up here? So you're facing the public, yeah? Thank you. Ginger, if you want to say something, go to the mic. The board, if the board would like to say any words, you may do so.
What a phenomenal night for our library and those who have dedicated themselves to it. On behalf of the Tukahoe Public Library Board of Trustees, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude to the Tukahoe Road Race and to the Tukahoe Kids Table for their incredibly generous donations to our beloved library. The Tukahoe Public Library is truly the heart of our community, a place where residents of all ages and backgrounds can come together to learn and to connect and to grow. Our newly renovated space will better serve everyone in Tukahoe. And we're excited to announce, if you haven't heard anywhere else, that the library doors will reopen to the public on Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. Renee and Hudson and Denver, this support will have a lasting impact, enriching the experiences we offer and strengthening the bonds that make our beautiful Tukahoe so special. Thank you for your dedication to our community.
Hi, I'm Ginger Crohn. Vice President of the Board, previous president for mucho years and member. And I wanted to acknowledge Swadish. She has led our library. From when I was initially on the board, she was a librarian and then got promoted to director and really stepped up to the plate. She has spent so much time writing grants, getting money like nobody I've ever seen do this, and with David's guidance and assistance as well on this. And it has saved the village a ton of money. Precisely, I can't tell you how much, but quite a bit. And she really deserves a round of applause for all the extra hours she's doing for this. Once we have those two parking meters removed from the parking lot, I don't know what I'm going to have to talk about.
I know. Ginger? I have a feeling you'll find something to talk about.
I'm sure I will.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
The hard work she puts in, many, many after-hours time. And it shows. So please come on Wednesday. Even poke your nose in, take a look, take us to see what we have. This is just a soft opening until we have something a little more spectacular. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. I will come back when my time comes.
Can someone take that check, please? Okay. Good stuff tonight. We, the public hearing is still open to consider the modifications to the village code related to short-term rentals. Are there any updates? Gary?
Well, in the courts, New York City was extremely restrictive. The court said, "Yeah, that's fine." But the more prudent way to go is maybe just watch what the state does to see if they have registries and stuff like that, and kind of just follow their lead. It might be the way to go.
Okay. We'll keep it open for now. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Have a good night, Axelbaum family. And thank you for everything. So we have the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on any agenda items, you may do so now. Anyone on Zoom? Okay. So we'll move to resolutions. The first resolution, may I have a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an IMA with Westchester County for midnight shift dispatch services? The village has been doing this for quite a number of years now, and it does save the village some money because during the overnight hours, if someone calls 911, the Westchester County is dispatched, and they determine they'll either notify us or they'll send someone. So may I have a motion to continue that IMA with Westchester County?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. Also, I'd like to close out some capital projects. So may I have a motion to authorize a closing out of DPW vehicles and library bathrooms? And if you look at A and B there, you'll see that it starts, the numbers start with 2021 and 2022. These are projects that have been closed now, but it takes some time to close out with all the paperwork and if it's grants and all of that stuff. So we just want to formally authorize the closing of these capital projects. So may I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. And let's pay the bills. May I have a motion to approve the vouchers? Vouchers, the approval of vouchers, huh? In the amount of $272,770.43.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And that'll take us to departmental reports. So Chief Larry Rhoda of the Police Department will begin.
Good evening again.
Good evening, Chief.
Halloween was a safe evening for the village, and we had a great evening with great weather, uneventful, which is good for the PD side. It was nice to see all the kids out, and the creepy crawl event was so well-attended as well. And thank you to Trustee Cronin for putting so much time and volunteering for that. It was a lot of work. And it's going to get bigger each year, as we see. I just want to get into traffic safety. Traffic safety is a top priority within our department. Now that the daylight savings time is in effect, it's getting dark out earlier. So I just urge the residents and motorists to slow down, pay attention, look both ways, and watch for pedestrians. I did receive several inquiries regarding Lincoln Avenue at Oakland Avenue and why there isn't a stop sign there. And over the years, we've had several engineers look at this intersection. And just looking at it, you'd say, "Well, it would make sense for a stop sign there." Unfortunately, it doesn't. And based on engineering recommendations, it doesn't fit the criteria regarding road grade and line of sight, the line of sight from the curb and then the road grade coming down. So unfortunately, this is more of a public service announcement that at that intersection, if you're coming down Lincoln Avenue, pay attention and be alert for anyone pulling out and not seeing you. And if you're crossing Lincoln Avenue from Oakland, always look both ways. So we're going to tend to the area a little bit and also make sure people are stopping for that stop sign and keep an eye out for it. Last week, our traffic safety unit was out conducting commercial vehicle enforcement. They wrote 35 summonses to commercial vehicles entering our village, either overweight, unsafe, and registration issues and whatnot. So we're out there, and we're looking for, we are a trucking route thoroughfare here. So unfortunately, we do see a lot of commercial vehicles coming through the village, which we want to make sure they're safe. I'd also like to remind residents of a service the Police Department offers, and that is Dark House Checks. So if you do go away and you are not home, please let us know. And we'll ask you some questions at the desk. And when you're coming back, where you're going, car, not where you're going, I'm sorry. Be in the lot, in the driveway, and things like that. We'll give you recommendations as well. So it's a service that I just want to make sure all the residents are aware of.
I'm sorry, Chief. Can you put something out so that people who may not see this meeting will know that this is available to them?
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, my crime tip, tips, I will say, Nicole, because it's a long one this time around. So we're going into the holiday season here. So with the holiday season upon us, this brings an increased level of what I call crimes of opportunity. So deterrence with that is key. Knowing your neighborhood, knowing the vehicles that travel or something that looks suspicious, we want to be alerted and notified, just to keep an eye out. And with that being said, the basics of lock your car door, leave your house lights on, especially with it darker earlier now. Get some smart switches, leave different lights on or off. Another basic one, remove your Amazon packages from the front door. Don't leave them out waiting to be taken. And that's an example of a crime of opportunity. And then also be aware of your surroundings while shopping this holiday season, especially our senior citizens with the- our senior citizens with distraction theft, asking for a change of a bill, or you drop something, and then in the meantime, they're pickpocketing you as well or taking it on him of yours. Also, I will reiterate the ATM withdrawals. Try not to do that at night. Be aware of your surroundings. Know if anyone's following you, and if you ever receive or get a flat tire after going to an ATM, just drive straight to a police station or call 911 because it could be most likely a scam targeting you to get your card disabled, and then they will then take your money from you just withdrew from the ATM. So it's a very common old-school scam, and it's still happening today. And for the final crime tip of the month, and this is coming from FBI Director Ray, and we are seeing this locally, countywide, and nationwide. Check fraud in the banking industry has substantially increased this year countrywide. And what we mean by that is the check washing, scanning, changing amounts, changing names, changing payees, and whatnot. So the number-one method that we suggest to stop that and be a deterrent or not be a victim of this is to, one, deposit your checks inside the post office, not outside, in mailboxes, which are susceptible to criminals looking to either have a device or get into the mailbox. So if you do have a check, drop it directly into the post office. Secondly, set up online bill pay. This might sound redundant, however, it does help. If you are automatically paying your bills, that means less checks going into the postal service. And recommendations to, and anyone who has senior citizen as a family member, set them up as well. They are targeted based on their age and their checks and who they write checks to that they may not notice as quickly that their accounts have been fraudulently attended to. So, and this is because they don't have a smartphone and they're not getting an alert that, hey, you just had a withdrawal. So I would say also a recommendation for people who have elderly relatives that maybe set the online banking up for them so that the check and the bill goes out automatically, and that will prevent as well from them being a victim of check fraud. So with that being said, I want to wish everyone a good fall. Be alert, be safe, keep your eyes out, and let's have another great month. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. This meeting took a turn very quickly. Be safe, everyone. Holiday season is upon us. Swadish, Director of the Library, can you please give us a report?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As Julie mentioned, that the library is, we are opening soon on Wednesday, November 10th, so the wait is over, and we cannot wait to welcome you into our new renovated space. And I have to say, we are very fortunate being in this community because this project would not be possible without the support of all of you, Village Board, wonderful staff, David Berg, Library Board, Library Staff, volunteers. I don't know, there are so many people, I cannot tell the name over here, but I am very, very fortunate, I feel it, that this project finally is done and we are ready to welcome you all. And I want to say thank you so much, Renee, for the generous donation to the Tuckahoe Library and the Tuckahoe Kids Table, Hudson and Denver. They always make me so like, like these are little kids and they are raising money, and they gave us the check $1,658. And also, I want to congratulate Elaine Provenzano, very well-deserved woman. You made a big difference in our community. And also, I want to say thank you to John Galucci. Because of his support, we were there for 10 months, I think. We moved in December, and now it is almost, and hopefully, it will take a couple of more months to take out everything, but I have to tell you, it's a big project, but the staff worked very, very hard these three weeks, I can tell you. So hopefully, you all come on Wednesday and see the library. I just also want to give you some of our programs. We are trying to do it at the new location, but some programs that we are still doing at the community center, ESL classes and children's storytime and yoga class. The classes are getting so bigger. When we do the Tuesday storytime, we have sometime 58 to 60 people. So it's very hard to accommodate right now in the library and with the strollers and everything. So hopefully, we will be able to continue, but the programs where attendance is not that big, I was thinking, but now about the yoga, we will do it in the multipurpose rooms. Last time, we had 19 people who attended the yoga class. I'm thinking, how am I going to accommodate all these people? So, and I am very happy that more and more people are coming out and using our services. So we also have our regular yoga, Tai Chi, Mahjong, and art classes. And the children's, we have a storytime and the graphic novel book club, which is, they are reading The Night Librarian, which is going to be in the library on Friday, November 15. And kids' Thanksgiving craft also going to be in the library on Tuesday, November 19. We have pre-K yoga, which is for children 2 and 2 1/2 to 5 years old, puppet show, Lagos, you name it. We have lots of different programs, special bilingual storytime, which is on November, Friday, November 22nd. If any question, please give us a call, or you can go to our website, tuckaholibrary.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Swadish. Frank Demarko, our superintendent, is not here tonight. Do you have anything, Camille? Oh, Lord. She said the meeting's taking a bigger turn. Can we give her a mic? Can we just have like?
The December, the December tax bills are in the mail. You may pay them online, visit our website, and click on the red flag on the front page.
Well, at least they're online. Thank you, Camille. Unfortunately, she has to be the bearer of bad news, but don't blame her. It's not her. It's not her fault. Thank you. Gary, do you have anything? David?
Camille, thank you, Camille. We, that tax dollars coming in, because we have lots of fun projects going on around here. Quick update, a lot of people are asking about what's going on in Depot Square right now. Obviously, this is part of a larger project with the Bowman Grant that we got. Right now, we're just doing curbing work. It had to be replaced. It was in just such bad shape that it was posing a danger. So we're going to do some curbing work and some temporary patching. Hopefully, the bigger project will start in the spring, but there's a lot of coordination with that, a lot of work to be done with the grant itself, and a lot of coordination regards to materials and supplies and all this kind of stuff. So for right now, just a little bit curbing work, but bigger and better things are going to come early next year. When everyone was talking about the library, I, earlier today, I started to put pen to paper and how many people to thank in regards to this, and I'm not going to say, if I say one, I have to say dozens, and I don't want to miss anyone, but I will put that, I will put that together just to kind of show how many people have touched this library to move out of the library, to move back in, to get this coordinated and done. It was an amazing effort from nearly everybody in this village. So a big kind of general thank you to everyone without kind of pinpointing.
Smart man.
It's right. And then just as, I know this is one of our members' last meetings, and I just want to say that it was nice to have a fellow Burn Hill Spartan on the, on the team here. And Nicole, it was a pleasure working with you the last couple of years, and I wish you well, and I know you'll be back and doing stuff for, you know, in different regards.
Thank you. I know that there was something that I wanted to ask you to give an update on, Chief, and can you come back up and give an update on the lights? Because I know we've done some additional work there, and we're moving closer to getting to the area that everyone is waiting for at Depot Square.
Yes, so just an update on the traffic light infrastructure program. We have Midland Avenue and Winter Hill live with our traffic flow sensors working. I did speak to Verdi Electric today, and they're going to schedule a crew out towards the end of the week to do Marble Dell Road, which includes Cronin's Hill area as well. And the next one after that will be Depot Square and then Lake Avenue. So we have an endpoint for the holidays, and we're looking to complete that.
Awesome.
So we're moving along, and there are some poles to be removed. I spoke to them today as well, on the bottom of Winter Hill at Midland, the old traffic light poles. So we're moving along, and the first crew will be out on Marble Dell this week.
Yes, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay. So just want to remind everyone, December 2nd is the next Village Board meeting, and December 7th is our Winter Fest at Depot Square from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And that will take us to our Board of Trustees reports. And Trustee Lang, can you give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I want to congratulate the Provenzano family. It's a wonderful award and very deserving of it, and I can't wait to see the future recipients. We've got so many special people in the village that deserve that award, so it's going to be very, very nice to watch in the future. Congratulations. And thank you to Denver, Hudson, and Renee for, that's a lot of money, so thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much. Okay, but first and foremost, I would like to thank Trustee Nicole Engelbert for her service to our village, and special thanks to the Engelbert family, who also indirectly served our village with their sacrifices. Thank you, and we wish you well, Nicole. And I just wanted to say, we will be pushing for less plastic in the Village Hall with the next administration, so thanks again.
Josh is hiding his.
I want to congratulate the Eastchester Columbus Day Celebration Committee and the Eastchester Italian-American Club for their participation in putting together an amazing weekend of celebration. I was proud to represent our village in Eastchester's 50th Columbus Day Parade, so thank you very much. I would also like to thank our merchants and residents of Main Street that came out for our kids at this year's Halloween event, and a special thanks to Kara Cronin for organizing such an amazing event. Thank you, Kara. So we have some exciting news. We would like to congratulate the girls for our city soccer team who won the championship, and will be advancing to the sectionals. Go Tigers! Beautification wanted me to tell the village that wreaths and decorations will be going up in the next few weeks, and to thank the village for their continued support. The community center will be holding the general election and village election tomorrow between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. We encourage everyone to get out and exercise their right. Open gym will continue to be Wednesdays for now until things move along with the library, and they seem to be moving along very well. Congratulations, Swadish. Nice job. Thank you so much. We can't wait to be there on Wednesday. They're also having children's music class with Luke on Thursdays from 10:00 a.m. to 10:45, and I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thanks a lot, have a mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gachion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will start with the history committee. Our village historian, Nick Zanzano, is collaborating with local historians on a project sponsored by the Youth Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe, and the Friends of the Wardhouse. The students will research and create YouTube videos on 10 noteworthy sites on the Route 2 corridor, which will help advance and highlight our local history. And if I can just nerd out a little bit on you here, it's so interesting if you go back to see from Route 22, the Battle of Pelham Bay and the Battle of White Plains, Route 22 is the main line of communication for that. So the amount of history that's on that road is fantastic, so we're really looking forward to those videos. That'll be really neat. Okay. Revolutionary Westchester 250, living history, it's a free event. We'll have a table. The history committee will have a table on November 9th, 11 to 4, at Croton Point Park. And the marble donation, I think I mentioned a little bit on this last month, but a beautiful original Tuckahoe marble fireplace mantel has been donated to the Tuckahoe History Committee from the family of Patrick White, who was a skilled artisan that worked in the marble quarries, and it will be, it'll be on display here in the new future, and it's massive. Do you know how much it weighs? It's massive. Yeah, it's incredible. It's so beautiful, so I can't wait for it to get out here. Two posts about the DPW had the most reach for the history committee last month, 1,200 reactions. 719 of them were Vito Pinto and our commissioner in the back, Anthony Laurie, looking at their family history binders. And, you know, this is Nicole's meeting, and she likes fun facts, and I'm really happy that Ms. Eileen gave us a fun fact today. Thanks to former Tuckahoe historian Liz Leckie, who, if you don't know her, is just a fantastic human, so get to know her, for her recent donation of archival materials, one of the discoveries was that the mayors of Tuckahoe were originally called presidents until 1927, beginning with Walter Crouch, who would have been Madam President of Tuckahoe. So that's it for history committee?
I was only born earlier.
Yeah, right. They meet here in Village Hall on Wednesday morning, so come on by. They're always doing some pretty neat things. Historic Preservation Commission, I did not see a scheduled meeting online. Good, thank you. But in the very near future, you know, the building where your fannies are seated at the moment is up for historic preservation, so we'll see how that goes. It'll be very interesting. And I have a lot on Veterans Day this month, but I will be super brief here. Veterans Day is November 11th, so Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans out there and their families who have to put up with us. I will have a longer list of the events that are going on. I'll put it on social media, but just a couple of them. We'll be joining Eastchester on November 11th in the morning at the Eastchester Senior Citizen Center on Veterans Day, so come on up and join us there. On November 10th, the day before that, we'll be at St. James Alask Episcopal Church with veteran researcher and historian Bill Stump, and it's a really cool kind of presentation that he puts on because the amount of early veterans who are buried there, there have been several books written about it, it's just, it's pretty amazing. November 6th and November 7th will be at, and November 8th, will be at various schools throughout the community, Eastchester, Bronxville, and Tuckahoe. And we will also be assisting into luncheons, all of these, it's a very long list of events, so I will make sure that all of them are up on social media. And I have one more here, that on Wednesday, the village was asked to participate at Pete's Saloon in Elmsford, where there will be, for the Disabled American Veterans Foundation, which is one of the Big Six, as they call them. They do a lot of great work for veterans throughout the country, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
What am I forgetting? I'll restate that. Thank you, Commissioner Laurie. So on Veterans Day, 7:30 at Assumption Church, there's a veterans' mass, and then a dedication outside to the monument that's out there. So all are welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Gachion. Trustee Engelbert? It's your report.
It's my last report.
I want to cry.
Oh, no one should cry. That's not sad. Okay, so tonight is the last, the last one for me, so instead of kind of running through stuff at the library or test our Eastchester schools, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of go, go a bit rogue and just reflect a little bit on the last kind of two and a half years, kind of, sort of what I learned, or something what I thought was important. I don't know how many of you know, it all started with a text message from the deputy mayor here, and I thought it was a phishing scam, to be honest. I was like, Kara, do you know, like, someone has your account? Because it couldn't be possible that I would run for public, public office. I mean, sure, volunteering and public service is kind of how my family kind of works, is kind of our values, but like, I'm a corporate gal, you know, and I'm from New York City, like, that's where I came from, and I moved here, so I didn't consider myself like a really compelling candidate. I'm like, why, why would you want me to do this? But I'm really glad, two and a half years later, that I didn't actually just delete the text, and I heard, I heard Kara, Kara out, because I've learned a great deal from many of the people in this room, people like Swadish, you're like my, I wouldn't say you're my mother, because you're not that, that old or that kind of crazy, but you're this kind of older sister that I love and respect in so many ways. And Donald Jujur Crosby, you're an inspiration, kind of your dedication to, to the village. And David, I wrote you down. This is not me, like, kind of saying, you said, kind of me, but, and too- and two police chiefs that if I were to be completely candid kind of with you all, changed how I thought, what I think about law enforcement and, and community policing. I came in with a different perspective than the one I'm leaving with. And that's a really important thing for humans, to change and grow in their perspectives and you helped, helped me with that. He's not here today, but our own Echo Warrior Frank DiMarco, he might kind of die of embarrassment if he knew I called him that, but that's what he, what he is. And the Axelbaum family, they really are kind of hashtag kind of family, family goals. And Dear Dr. Howell, though I'll never forgive you for not letting me have the coyote cutouts kind of on the, on the park. I'll be on my deathbed, but the coyote cutouts. Sarah DeRice, Claudia DeMayo Francis, no one puts together a fundraiser like she does. The formidable Denise Chin, who scares me, but also gets it done for kids who need, who need the help that she kind of offers. And Michelle Brish and our Girl Scouts, Marvelous Marveen and so many, many more. People who give, kind of of themselves for the community, who look past the small and the petty and the short term and the selfish and take action for the betterment of the whole. They invest in the common good and the long term. I am a better person for having been in their orbit, for having sat kind of in this, in this chair. I mean, there are, but more importantly, our community is better for all of their, their work. And the people who come after us will have a better of Tuckahoe because of their, their work. Their work brings lightness into the, into the dark. Now, no doubt, the board, after the next board, will face some really difficult, what I would actually consider impossible kind of challenges. It isn't that there are no easy answers to the questions of fiscal sustainability or flood mitigation or kind of affordable housing, and they just need to work harder to kind of find them. The answers don't actually exist kind of yet. It's going to take bold thinking and smart thinking and creative thinking and courageous and long-term kind of thinking to create and execute them. They will need each and every one of you to stand up and be an active member of our community to help them. You know, ask Mr. Rogers what he says about this, look for the helpers kind of in a crisis. You all need to be the helpers as we, we struggle and take on these challenges. So I ask each of you to go out and join TESC, sign up for a Majon class if you can get in. You have to like hit submit like the day that, that opens up. Drop off a bag of candy at the crawl, clean up some trash in the park. Drop by the Juneteenth or the Pride Celebration, attend that comprehensive planned community forum or a planning meeting, or have a cone with a cop, ride the trolley, share some photos with the History Committee, enjoy a movie in the park, you see where I'm going with this. There are so many ways to be involved with our beautiful village. Bookmark the page and get up off your couch and get, get involved. You don't show your love for Tuckahoe with some saber rattling or indifference. You show it by planting tulips in the park on a Saturday afternoon. You show it by showing up. So, in the end, I can't say I'm going to miss having to wear a Thing 1 costume, an Incredibles costume, a Minions costume, yeah, I'm looking at you. But I will say it's been an incredible honor to serve each and every one of you and to be part of this amazing board, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Engelbert. Deputy Mayor.
That was a really hard act to follow and really incredible. I'm going to do the, the, the practical things right now. So the seniors are closed tomorrow, they want everybody to know that. It is Election Day, please remember to vote, but the seniors will not be meeting because Father Fatahall is a polling place. The Icon Foundation and Keller Williams Realty are sponsoring the Masquerade Gala on Thursday at the Surf Club, which proceeds partially go to the Tuckahoe seniors. So if you have a mask and some time and some desire, please join us on Thursday at the Surf Club. Tickets are still being sold, you can reach out to Sarah DeReese if you're interested or go to givingbutter.com/masquerade24. On November 21st, the seniors are celebrating a Friendsgiving breakfast at 9:30. And I just want to make note of what a successful bingo night the seniors had last, last month. It was a really good time, it was a packed house, they were, it was just a lot of fun. So thank you to, and congratulations to Michelle Olivia, this was her first one and I know that first time can be a little daunting and overwhelming, but she did a great job. The Planning Board is adjourned for this month, all the items are adjourned. The Zoning Board will meet on the 13th at 6:45 for a work session and then 7:30 for the official meeting. There are five items that are on the agenda. 20 Underhill is, there's a permit application to convert a basement into living space with a full bathroom. 174 Marble Dale is a request to convert commercial units to residential units on Marble Dale Road. 116 Bella Vista is a permit application to expand a driveway and retaining wall. And then 18 Fairview Avenue, they are looking to convert an attic to some livable space. 137 Columbus Avenue is adjourned. The former Deputy Mayor did mention this, but I want to reiterate that on December 4th, which will be before our next meeting, I believe, there is the ComPlan Public Forum and this is a really important meeting. This is a good time to step up and be part of the solutions for the, the future of this community. So in this forum, we will, we will bring people together and there will be an opportunity for you to talk about the future directions of this village. There will be like question and answer, it'll be part focus group, part, kind of part survey question. And so please do come, it'll be at the Tuckahoe Community Center, I believe at 7 o'clock, right? Refreshments will be served, I promise. But do come on down because this is your opportunity. Come and talk about how you, how you see the future of this village and let your voices be heard. This is, this is, this is another way to exercise your democratic rights. I want to just take a moment to thank everybody for the success of the Candy Crawl. I appreciate all the thank yous that I get, but really this is a major group effort and it cannot be done without the entirety of this village, this board who is always willing to dress up in the most ridiculous things that I ask them to. David, the Police Department, the Chief, the DPW, Joe Tavolo, Frank, everybody. And Johnny Reichelt, who was our secret minion. Thank you to everybody who works here, everybody, like there were countless volunteers, again, I could not name them all, but I do want to say a special thank you to Michelle and Abby Olivia, who don't live here, but spent the entire morning on Saturday making the trolley haunted. So the trolley was haunted and it was a really good time and they, they did that with Johnny Reichelt, so I just want to say thank you. But the star of the show really is, are our businesses. So 34 businesses participated and or donated to this event. And this was an event that I started because the businesses were struggling during their pandemic. We, we started this to get people out on Main Street so that we could showcase the businesses that we have, so that could, people could see what this village has to offer. And it has grown and grown, so now we invite businesses that aren't on Main Street. We had a new, we have a brand new business that's just opening this week and the owner said to me, you know, thank you so much, I don't know that I would have been able to meet so many people and let them know that I'm here in any other way. So thank you for inviting us and I'm glad that you just happened to catch me as I was, I was setting up the register. So thank you to all those businesses, this is really for you. The Lions Club is hosting a toy drive until December 10th. You, they are specifically looking for toys and gift cards for older children. It's very easy to find them for younger children, so they're looking for ages 8 to 17 and really focusing on like 12 and above. Gift cards are great and you can drop those off at Sal's Auto in Eastchester or Hart Bowes here on Marble Dale Road in Tuckahoe. So please think about donating to them. I want to remind everybody to vote and exercise your democratic right. I want to just say congratulations to Elaine, Ms. Elaine, congratulations. I don't think there could be more joy than watching you realize that it was you who we were talking about as we were, as the mayor was reading the description on the award. Because I watched you go, oh, who works at the library? And that was absolutely amazing, so congratulations and thank you for really representing the spirit of this community. You are the rock, every single one of those attributes that she read off the mayor, you wholeheartedly represent every single one of those. So thank you and congratulations. And Nicole, I think I will miss you most of all, Scarecrow. One day, you know, you said to me, you, you always refer to us as public servants and you as a corporate girl, but you are, you have truly become a public servant and I'm so impressed. I am, I am grateful that you ran and served on this board and thank you for all that you've done. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody and I'll see you next month.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do want to reiterate a thank you to the Deputy Mayor for the Creepy Candy Crawl, which was a bit of her brainchild years back. When she thought about, you know, what could we do during the pandemic and everyone was frantic about being out, being together indoors and she said, you know, can we close the Main Street? And David's like, what? Closing the Main Street? And really, her love for this community shines through in everything that she does. And that's one of the events that she holds, that she pours her heart into, that I've been encouraging her to allow some other people to pour their hearts into, because then she sleeps for three days afterwards. You know, we had, last year I just walked down Main Street and tried to count, as if you could do that, how many people were there and I, I estimated just in, in a matter of 10 minutes, 800 people. This year I anticipate there must have been 2,000 people. Because I counted initially, Chief, am I maybe right? So it just goes to show that when you do things with love and with care, that people do come. And they're coming with no agenda, there aren't any Democrats or Republicans at the Creepy Candy Crawl. There are just families and neighbors and friends coming together to have fun and to support our businesses. I had my family come and visit and they wanted to get a bite to eat and they couldn't find space in any of the local restaurants. So they're like, can we buy it and go and sit in your office? So my nephews got to sit in the mayor's office and, and have their lunch. So thank you so much, Deputy Mayor, for, you know, keeping that and I expect that'll probably be a tradition that continues. And I know the Chief and David keep bracing themselves every year for a bigger crowd. So, because she just starts with something else. She brought a stint, somebody on stints this year, we had the, the trolley was decorated, only God knows, prepare for next year. I also want to reiterate the importance of your participation in the comprehensive planning focus groups and community event. I would like to ask the village to check your agenda at the door. Try, you know, you may feel like the village shouldn't have spent money hiring this, this, you know, consulting group. You may feel that there was talent here, whatever your agenda is or whatever your reasons are, if you in fact, as you, many of you say you do, care so much about this community, come to the forum, offer your feedback with a sincere heart of wanting the best, having the best interests of the village at heart. That's the one thing that's going to unite us, is if you actually come with your feedback, think about with the village that you want to see in 10 years, think about what that looks like and come with actual feedback that is, doesn't have a hidden agenda. I'm just asking you to check yourself when you're doing that. And I'm encouraging every single resident and family to come out and give that feedback. We ask for this during budget season and nobody comes. But after budget season, everyone tells us how horrible we are if we have to increase taxes for whatever reason. This is not a question and answer, period, Ginger, you'll have the time to talk later. So I'm just asking the community to find it in your heart, to put these things aside that's dividing not just our country, our community, our, our state. Put it aside for, for a moment, because it's going to have an impact if you do not for decades to come. Can we do that? Thank you. I also want to say a big thank you to Trustee Gachion, who, a veteran himself, as he puts it, who jumped out of perfectly good planes, takes such good care of the veterans. There's not a time where I see him not thinking about what he could do for his fellow veterans, not thinking, he's selfless about it, he doesn't want any accolades, I know he's probably turning red right now, he is. Because he doesn't want for us to give him any accolades or, you know, to say thank you to him, but you deserve a thank you. Josh, thank you very much. And I also want to thank his family, Gina Gachion and Carmella, my BFF, for, you know, there are sacrifices that families make when we're serving on a board, when you're, you know, giving so much to your community. I can't think of the amount of boards and committees that you serve on, but every time I talk to him, he's doing something for a veteran. So I really appreciate that. It's, it's, you know, it's a selfless act and it's not done out of selfish ambition, so thank you so much, Josh. And I want to just say a few things about Nicole. She said, oh geez. I, I really enjoy, Tuckahoe is better for having had Trustee Engelbert on this board, I want you all to know. Tuckahoe is the better for it. She asked the questions that others were embarrassed to ask. She brought a different perspective that, you know, those of us who are not in corporate may not have thought about. And this is why it's so important to have diverse people on a board. Not just diversity in terms of, you know, your racial or ethnic background or, you know, whether you're a man or a woman, but in terms of your work experience, because you bring a different perspective in whatever you do. And so I really appreciated, you know, she is super smart, she's one of the smartest people that I know. And she brought that because she cares about this community and she always thought about, what's the best thing to do even if it was hard? And those are the kinds of people that you need on this board. So Nicole, thank you so much for serving, for not counting it robbery, as the Baptists say, to serve on this board and for, you know, just all that you've brought to Tuckahoe. And I just want to acknowledge that Tuckahoe really has benefited by having you on this board, thank you so much. And thank you to Trustee Gachion for picking up the flowers, he was assigned.
I had to give Jackie some props for ordering it.
So I just got passed a note by Deputy Mayor that there will be no trolley on November 8th, so we want to make sure everyone is aware of that. I want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day. It's also a difficult time for me, my father was a veteran and he passed away. And every time I talked to him about his experience when he was at war, he really never could talk to me about it. So there was always a little part of me that wondered what he went through that made it so hard for him to talk about it. So on Veterans Day, I take a moment to, to pause and to think about him and his experience and the experience of all veterans who served. So thank you all so much if you've served and thank you to the families for the sacrifices made because families also give when, when, when their loved ones are served. And just wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Find someone who does not have family to share and invite them over or bring them, you know, bring them a meal, bring them a pie. Just go and sit with the senior who may not have family with them. Holidays are happy for most of us, but there are some people who don't have family or have lost loved ones during that time, so I ask us to just keep those people in mind as well. And that will take us to second opportunity to address the board on any items. Anthony Fiori.
Good evening and morning, Anthony Fiori, it's a rebelling place. First of all, best of luck to you. I know you'll still be around. And congratulations to Officers Gonzalez. And this is daylight savings time, so make sure you check your batteries and your smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, anything. Best of luck to all the candidates tomorrow, but the election's not over yet. There is a Fire Commissioners election, December 10th from 2:00 to 9:00 PM. 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. Tucko residents will go to the Tucko Community Center. I am running for fire commissioner, so my name will be on it. And if anything, anything needs an absentee ballot, just go on the website, eastchesternewyorkfd.gov. All the information's there, whatever you need. You have to download a form to get an absentee ballot, and then they'll mail, then they'll mail it to you.
Thank you.
Other than that, happy Thanksgiving. Best of luck, everyone.
Thank you for the information. Anyone else? Yes, Swadish?
I just want to say thank you so much, my little sister.
You noticed she made the correction. She's not your mom. She's your big sister.
I told her before that. No, it's such a pleasure working with you. It was a special bonding with her. She was the first one who visited every month, and we discuss what's going on at the library and how we can improve, and I learn a lot from you, and I'm going to miss you. Thank you so much, being there for me. All the best.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board?
I want to thank you all again, and I, Nicole, you're really going to be missed. I've just so enjoyed working with you at the library, all the great ideas that you've come up with, programs. Are you doing this program? Well, look into it. And your enthusiasm. Whenever you would come, you know, it just, your dedication would always pick us up, especially the last year was very challenging to have the renovation, the move, and, and I know so many of you were involved, especially David, and of course, Swadish, what she had to, to go through. But I just can't thank you enough personally for what you, you've done, working with you. It's been just so wonderful, and then your, your leadership on the board and for our village. So, it's been amazing. But I know I'll be seeing you, but I will miss seeing you here. So, good luck, best wishes to you. God bless.
Anyone else would like to address the board? Yes?
Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
With your permission, could I address this question to the chief?
Sure.
Chief, is there any way, when we have gardeners that block the fire hydrant, is there any way that we could issue them a summons?
Chief, can you come forward?
Let me just explain something to you. It wasn't in our jurisdiction, but me driving the trolley, going all around, I see these gardeners blowing their leaves, and even residents piling everything, including garbage, on top of the hydrant. Friday, I was going up Jackson Avenue, I know it's Eastchester, chief, but I just wanted to let you know. Right on the top of, I think it's next to Sleepy Hollow, the gardeners were blowing the leaves last week. I just didn't say nothing. I got out of the trolley, and I cleared the fire hydrant. Well, this week, we couldn't even find it. I had to call Chief Yazo to come out, take a look, and he walked from the back of New Street down to there. He couldn't even find the hydrant. In the event of a, of a fire, first of all, they're gonna have to find the hydrant. Second of all, then they're gonna have to clear it up. This all takes time for the firemen to connect to the hydrant, to the pumper, to get the water onto the fire. I urge, even when I'm on the board, I do it all the time, and I think they're getting sick and tired of Commissioner Laurie repeating himself, do not block the hydrant. We had a fire hydrant on the corner of Maynard and Wallace Street. I had to send Engine 28 over there with three men to clear it, because they put all their debris on, on top of it. You couldn't even see the hydrant. So, that's why I've asked if I could address this question to the chief, and what had happened last Friday. The chief had to call the town, and the town had to send a truck there with the vacuum to take the leaves out of there, so they could see the hydrant. And I guarantee, this Friday, when the gardener cleans up in Sleepy Hollow project over there, which is a senior citizens' building, he'll do it, he'll do it again.
So, you-
It's a gardener from Mount Vernon. The chief, the assistant chief knew, knew his name. He even called the owner and told the owner that your gardener's piling the leaves, not piling the leaves, burying the fire hydrant, which is a dangerous, dangerous situation. And for the people in Tuckahoe, Bronxville, or all over the community, don't pile everything on the fire hydrant, because everybody thinks that's the best place to put it.
So, a quick question. Did you say it was in Tuckahoe or Eastchester?
No, it was on the top of Jackson Avenue, which is Eastchester. But I just thought I addressed that question to the chief, that if this happens in Tuckahoe, I think the gardeners should be issued a summons.
Absolutely. Someone, if anyone, if anyone witnesses that happening, that's the key thing, they should call the police department and inform them.
Also, the homeowners, when they pack the-
Right, right.
The leave bags, where did they put it? Right on top of the hydrant.
So, I want to ask you to also go to the Eastchester Board Meeting-
Yes, I will.
And inform them as well.
I will, I will.
Okay, thank you. We got, I think we, that's the answer. No, chief, they should call the police department if it's witnessed. Do you want to come and say something?
So, in the village, we're lucky enough to have a constant crew patrolling the village and circling, and for leaf season, we, it is a tough time now where everything is so dry. Leaves came down very quickly. So, Mr. Laurie does have a point. If we see it happening, and we, we advise them of the village ordinance, the ordinance of a vehicle blocking the hydrant is a police enforcement. However, we can work with him, and also, it's, it's really more just teaching these private contractors that they can't do that, and place it strategically in front, not blocking visibility, not blocking the roadway, and not potentially causing an issue for an emergency.
Right.
Also, with this dry season, we do need to be cognizant of parking your vehicle on dry leaves. Years past, we've had, had several car fires, which would then potentially catch to another car or a resident. So, do not park your gas-powered vehicle on a leaf pile. So, Anthony, I invite you anytime, just call my office or come in, and we'll speak about it, and also, we can do a public service announcement. What, we can drive around all day, and unfortunately, we can't speak to every contractor about leaves, but we can make it a priority to be apparent. But I will say that our DPW is doing a fine job and a quick job daily to get these leaves out of the roadway, because we have tight streets here, and that includes the snow season as well.
Thank you, chief. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Just one last person who would like to really thank Nicole Engelbert for stepping up, and that was a hard thing to do. Thank her for always coming when I was on the board, prepared, intelligent, and kind. There were so many important things that were decided while you were on the board, and, you know, many police officers, a police chief, historic preservation law, fair housing law, so many of those important decisions you were part of, and I wanted to thank you for that. And I also wanted to thank you for giving me one of my most memorable moments as a trustee. If you remember one holiday winter festival, you and I were left alone in the Generoso Pope Foundation, and we set off an alarm, and we had to call the police, and we got ourselves on the police docket. Yeah. So, thank you for that, and thank you for everything that you did, Nicole.
Hysterical. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Good evening. Darrell Taylor, 35, Jefferson Place. Just for the ECAP, it's November. Thanksgiving is coming. ECAP has their baskets that they give out to the families in need. First, on this Wednesday, they have their regular food pantry, but they're gonna have two different days that they're gonna give out the Thanksgiving baskets. Unfortunately, I couldn't get those dates, so if you are somebody receiving a basket, just call ECAP at 914-337-7768. For Elaine, congratulations. You deserve all of it. Your service was, was absolutely awesome for them, for the library. From Nicole, you've done an amazing job on the board. One of the first things I said when this deputy mayor stepped down is, "Who is going to keep us laughing? Who's gonna come with the one-liners to break the ice to, you know, when things get tense?" And you stepped right up to the plate. I'm sure Nicole had her reasons to not run again, but I don't think many of them know. One of them is the selfless reason that I would have had to wait two years to run again, because I ran last year. And she, that, she actually, that was part of her decision to, to not run, to let me run in her place. So, I think she deserves a hand for that. It's a self, self, selfless act, and I just want to say thank you for everything you've done in your two years, and we know you're not going anywhere, because we're gonna be calling on you to continue to do the things that you have been doing, to help us, help the village, help the people. So, thank you for your service. For the Veterans, Veterans Day is coming up. God bless all the veterans for their service. I have a few veterans in my family that served, two brothers and a bunch of relatives, and they deserve to be honored in, in any, in every way. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Ginger, did you want to address the board?
Ginger Crosby, 9 Warren Avenue, since 1976. An old timer here. Boy, my house went up in value. I've always maintained that it's hard for us villagers to find out about the new businesses who come into the community, because you're driving your car, and you're focusing on the road, and you're not paying attention to what the storefronts are telling you. I think it would be a good idea if, like, I know, I know there's two new restaurants that have opened on Main Street. It would be nice if at the board meetings, you can give us like a recap of businesses that come in. It gives them a shot in the arm. How do we find out about them otherwise? We really don't know. Or if somebody's closing, it would be nice to know that as well. I think it would just be a good, like a hot tip line.
It's a great idea. Thank you.
Why, thank you. I think about these things.
You're full of them.
I am.
Full of them.
And Nicole, even though you're not on the board, we'll still be going after you for ideas and your contributions, and I have a lot of jewelry to show you. We share that interest.
Thank you.
David? No, I'm not gonna go there.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to make the board laugh? Please come forward. Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. No? No. Okay, so, just a reminder, our next meeting's on December 2nd. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, Tuckahoe, and we will see you next month. Have a good night.